Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent reflection for our servicemen and women throughout the world and for those who have passed away in our community, especially Emory Guardi, John Mello, and James Merkel. Thank you. Roll call, please.
Mr. King?
President.
Mr. Schuster?
President.
Dr. Rothschild?
Here.
Mr. McAndrew?
President.
Mr. Smurl?
Here. The special with the reading of the minutes.
Third order, three A, correspondence received from City Business Administration on November 5th, 2024 regarding payroll preparation tax collections as of October 29th, 2024. Three B, single tax office city funds distributed comparison report per year to date November 6th, 2024, and year-to-year comparison report for November 6th, 2023 to November 6th, 2024.
Are there any comments on any of the third order items? If not, received and filed. Do any council members have any announcements at this time?
Yeah, I have one announcement. Council was informed by the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation about a road closure, so Naog Avenue is going to be closed for the construction of the bridge on Greenridge Street. It's going to be closing on November 21st, so it's next Thursday, and it's going to reopen on October 23rd of 2026. So it's going to be closed for the next two years, that portion of Naog Avenue while that bridge is being replaced. That's all.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I have a quick one. I should have probably mentioned it during caucus, but as chairman for the Committee on Public Safety, I would like to personally thank and applaud the Scranton Police Department, the District Attorney's Office, and all other law enforcement entities that were involved for their efforts with Operation Deep Blue that resulted in arresting nine gang members of the Crips and dismantling a major drug trafficking ring in our city. Good job, guys.
I would like to second that as well. Good job, guys.
Thank you.
Fourth order, citizen participation.
First, Joan Hodeanis?
Ms. Scranton, still no police union contract on the city's website. Is that anywhere near completion?
They told me it is. They are still compiling it, the same as the fire department.
Okay, two-finger typist?
I'm sorry, well.
Two-finger typist.
After forty years of not complying, it is what it is.
Okay. How about DPW union contract negotiations still?
They are still in negotiation.
Okay. Forty-nine days left in their contract. And how about the 2023 audit?
Oh, I forgot to ask Matt.
Okey-dokey.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I will find out for next week.
Okay. I won't forget. You should all have a spreadsheet that I worked on over the weekend. It's only part of the budget. I was very interested in the pay raises and see how they broke down and a few other things. One of the things about budgets is it usually focuses on the upcoming year, but sometimes when you're doing that, you can identify trends, both positive and negative, which you should then be projecting out maybe two, three, four, or five years because maybe there's something you can change or correct. But at any rate, I looked at overtime, because you know how we always keep watching that, and it's projected to go up 16.07% next year. That's total overtime. But on the positive side, police overtime has a reimbursement on the revenues of $320,000, which I thought is damn fine. Their own overtime in their expenses is up $300,000, so they seem to counterbalance each other. Hopefully, that'll work out well. I looked at healthcare before I looked at the individual departments for salaries, and it's going up 5.5% pretty much across the board. But that's actually very good when you consider that the average nationwide increase is 9%. So we've managed to come in under that radar. But the pay raises, I just want to list the ones that are double-digit. The business administrator, a salary increase of 13.9%. Code enforcement manager, 13.91%. City solicitor, 13.9%. Here's an interesting one. The law department confidential secretary, up 23.14%. And then there's the DPW Fleet Services Supervisor. I wonder if this is the guy that's checking Rubicon. That person is up 16.44%. Now, there's a whole lot of other ones, as you could see on that eight-page spreadsheet. Lot of them in the 8% and 9% categories, but many of these are probably well-deserved, but you'll have to address that yourself. I saw there are two key areas where revenues are down, and I wonder if this is going to be a trend. Act 47 and other grants and DEP recycling, that apparently has taken a dip for the revenues. Department earnings went from $425,000 down to $95,000. One would wonder why. Is that going to continue? And then increases in expenses to look at. Telephone, up 31% to $325,000. Liability and casualty insurance, up 19% to $2.6 million. Workers' comp, up 50% to $3.5 million. Business administration office itself, up 23% to $8.1 million. Their posters in freight, up 87.5% to $75,000. Code enforcement, up 45%. Lips, up 29%. And DPW refuse, up 600%. Have a good day.
Thank you, Joan. Bob Bolus?
Now, when it comes to DPW negotiations, I think they've met in regards to the MOU or the MOA, but I don't think they've met in actual negotiations at this point in time.
Evening, Council. Bob Bolus, Scranton. I have some suggestions about what we heard here tonight with all three departments. First of all, I don't believe we should be doing any type of leasing. We have to maintain the vehicles when you lease them. They gotta be in different conditions when they go back and everything else, and we're paying the company that's leasing them. We're putting their money in their pocket. We should be buying them. You could get grants for anything else. Here, we're playing around with Weston Field, how long we've been playing with money here, money there, doing this, doing that. That's just one example. You could get grants to buy your equipment. You gotta maintain them anyway. They should all be converted to natural gas. You will cut down on your oil changes by 90%. Just that alone on any vehicle, because you're not on a natural combustion engine. It sucks stuff in from the outside, the air, the dirt, et cetera. In a natural gas, it's the gas to the engine. There's nothing in between. They run smoother, cleaner, and they're very efficient. So you would look at that right across the board. Please fire DPW, and you'll save tons and tons of money. Number one. Number two, I brought up here with what's going on with Lockwana County, with Gahan pushing this tax on us, and I haven't heard anybody here stand up for our rights against him and what he's doing with this tax increase. I brought out the hospital that's coming here is tax-exempt. They're tax-exempt, but they're making millions and millions of dollars. We don't get free medical. Why should they get free taxes? Number one. I brought out about all the nonprofits, the university, other ones. The university I brought out is a Catholic Jesuit school. They violated the rule of God, sex is a man and a woman. They violated. Their tax exemption should be revoked on all these properties that they have. Put the money back into taxpayers. Keep the chapel tax-exempt. Those are just for some of the things that we need to do here, but nobody's willing to do it. If we want to build this community, you gotta make cuts. We're just putting money out, money out, money out, money out, but we're not getting nothing in return. You're just knocking the hell out of the people in this community. The seniors can't figure out how we're going to live here anymore. Yet, we're going to get hit with a tax assessment. You're already paying a school tax that's ridiculous for people who only work so many months out of a year, get holidays, this, that, and the other, and we're paying for it. Kids can't even write their bloody name anymore, and this is what we're paying for, but you're taking it out on all the people in the city. I'd like to see all five of you at the commissioners' meeting and object to what they're doing because it's putting the screws to the people in this community. Gahan has an attitude. He called the commissioner, Mr. Chirmak, the other commissioner, a coward. I don't care who he thinks he is or what he is. I'm surprised Chirmak didn't lay him out, to be honest with you, because he's out of order. This isn't a Gestapo-controlled community or a dictatorship. It's about people that you represent. Now, the whole new thing is we have a president, and I want to show Mr. West there because he had a shirt that he kept wearing, "Trump sucks." Well, I want to show you, my friend, this is your new president. Get used to it. Okay? And we have to because we have a president that's going to make this country great where it was. You're going to see the gas countries come back up. You're going to see the economy change. He's already making changes, already calling overseas, and he's going to put a lot of things down that weren't done. But the most important thing is our gas industry is going to come back. People are going to go to work, and we're going to do that. But we gotta watch spending money on Weston Field and all the money we're squandering. This is the hottest summer in the year, and where do we go swimming? Naog's a mud pond, a stupid splash park because they didn't use that. You're in the industry. You know about grouting and doing everything else to cut out leaks or raising buildings and everything else. You know how we do all that, and that should have been done up there, but nobody bothered to test it. So-called engineers are clueless. But we have a mud pond at Naog Park, and we're going to have a splash park, and we senators or seniors are going to run and go, "Goodie, goodie, we're having so much fun in a splash park." It's ludicrous that we have to go through this. Let's make a change for the city, just like this guy on my chest is going to chase this country around. Thank you.
Mr. Bolus, will you check the light switch back there to see if it's on? The lights are all out on that side of the board.
Wait, I'm sorry?
The light switch? Oh, he'll check it for you.
Oh, the lights aren't lit over here. I was wondering what happened tonight. I thought maybe it was my eyesight.
Yeah, oh, there it is.
Oh, there you go. There's our miracle worker. Look at that. She put light on the subject. Thanks, and have a good night.
You too. Mrs. Les Spindler?
Need a counsel, Les Spindler, city resident homeowner. This is a subject I've talked about many times. Dorothy Street by the playground, where to put new storm drains in. There's no, the hole's filled in, but I said this a while back. That area keeps sinking. There's a big dip there now. I was walking my dog by there the other day. A minivan went by and bottomed out. I talk about this time after time after time, and nothing gets done. It was done unprofessionally. I'm not an engineer, but it doesn't take one to figure out somebody screwed up. It wasn't filled in right, and now it's sinking, and it's going to cause people to have their cars damaged. The whole thing's going to be dug up and refilled in again and paved over again.
Les, how far up is that? What's, is it close here?
Eighteen hundred.
Eighteen hundred? Thank you. Mr. Waldenberg, will you please send that to Director Gassimire?
They've been advised. I'll advise again.
Thank you.
Yeah, the excuse will probably be now that the weather's getting too bad to do it.
Mr. Waldenberg, when we asked that, could we ask if it was just a temporary fill and they're coming back, or if that was the permanent fix and it just subsided?
I will, sir.
Well, something on the positive side, I was glad to hear the other day on the news that we're not going to have a pay increase, a tax increase in the 2025 budget. So that's a help because, as Bob said, the county's giving the screws to us. I don't know what people in my shoes are going to do with a 33% tax hike. We'll see what happens there. On Channel 16 News tonight, they had a story about a playground, the Wokesbury, was built two years ago, but they just had a big celebration there today. It's specifically for autistic and special needs children. We're building splash pads in this city, all playgrounds for kids that aren't special needs. Correct me if I'm wrong. I don't think we have a playground like that in this city, do we?
So the municipal record authority has been funding, getting funds together to do the butterfly park at Naog, and that is an all-inclusive playground that they're attempting to build.
Because I drive special needs kids to it from school, and something like that would be terrific.
It's begun. Please, please, can you stop speaking in the back? We can't hear up here. Mr. Spindler, a chance to speak?
Yeah, so the kids today, they had a ball there. The mayor was there. They have a zip line. Mayor Brown was pushing them on the zip line. It'd be something terrific to have in this city instead of all these splash pads we're putting in. That's all I have tonight. Oh, just one thing. The only people that the president's going to help are people like Bob that are rolling in money. They're not going to help people like me that live paycheck to paycheck. I have to work a part-time job to make ends meet. So good luck, Bob.
Thank you. Lee Morgan?
Well, counsel, the first thing, the first thing I have here is that the people that are robbing the poor are your city and county governments. It's not the President of the United States. So, you know, if you're a little offended about the amount of taxes you're paying, just look in front of you, and you can see where the problem begins. Okay? But, you know, there's allegedly going to be a meeting at Trips Park on Thursday at 6:00 on a stormwater authority. I hope everybody'd go to that meeting. A phone number there is 570-343-0342. I don't have a number for the Tripp Park Neighborhood Authority, but this stormwater has to be funded by the city's budget. The city sold the sewer authority off, knew it didn't have a plan, okay? And the original plan was to build three retention ponds with the Scranton Sewer Authority, and when it was possible, they'd drain the ponds down and run the water through the plant. But, you know, you've got to thank the former council president, Joe Wexler, because he didn't support the project, but he introduced it. And the council of, the council president doesn't have to introduce anything at any time, and no one can force them to do that. So if you know that a project has no merit, no matter what the mayor wants to do, no matter what your fellow council members want to do, they can't force you to introduce that legislation. And I think it goes back to Joe Wesler. Okay? Now, you could ask yourself, what about Bill Gahan and, you know, Pat Rogan, Wayne Evans, and Tim Perry? Well, they never should have voted to sell that either because now we're in a situation in the city where we have a totally useless city government and county government because we have citizens in our city that can't pay their water and their sewer bills, but I don't hear any discussion taking place here or there as far as the council. Did you ever think that maybe you should, you know, say something or do something at all, just anything, even the people in the county, like the county commissioners? How about the Council on Dunmore? I mean, there really needs to be a solution found, even if it leads to condemnation actions in law to gain, control those assets. Because the state of Pennsylvania owns all the water, every drop of it. Now, the PUC is just another corrupt political organization appointed by the governor. They never should have let that sale take place because the Scranton Sewer Authority and the bonds that were sold to build it were never designed to pay the city's pensions. And, you know, Mr. Smurl, I'd like you in the next meeting to tell all the residents in this city, how much money are the sale of the Scranton Sewer Authority went to the pensions? Let all the people in this city know and exactly where that money went. Okay? Let's really know how much really went there, and let's not talk about borrowed money that went there. Okay? Let's really talk about the beating that the residents took. And now, you know something? There was a conversation here about the homeless having to pay $2.50 to take a shower at Weston Field, I believe it was. Well, that's how much it costs a resident to take a shower in their own home. There's people telling me that they can't live here anymore. They can't pay $200 or $300 a month for water and sewer, and I'm waiting for this council to do something, and the mayor. Okay? It's nice to parade yourselves around and do slideshows, but the truth of the matter is people can't live in this city because of the mismanagement of this city by the people they elected. And, you know, I mean, it's just reached the point, even when you look at ECTV, that's an asset that belongs to the people, not the city government. The people should have a right to go to that channel and be heard on the things they want to fix in the city, but you have locked them out. And I haven't heard this council talk about restoring that as a public access channel for the public. You're like little dictators. I think that Hitler's standing behind you, or Stalin, because you don't represent us. Okay? You dictate to us and tax us and abuse us, but you're not doing anything for us, and that needs to change. And in the next election, we got rid of Court Right, and we got rid of Casey, and we got rid of all the Democrats. And you know what? It's time to get rid of the rest, the mayor, the council. Vote independents in, but you guys have to go.
Thank you, Mr. Morgan. Dave Dobson?
Boy, the place for that kind of talk is down the street. There's an FBI office, but make sure it's the truth. I had a little thought popped into my head when it was announced that safety, public safety employees could move out of town, and I would just caution them, don't move too far. I spent a good part of my life sitting in a car, and one time there was a snowstorm on New Year's Day. I had to show up at work, and lucky I did because I got indulged from the boss with a couple of quadruple bourbons at the bar. And the next morning, there are a few guys fired for not showing up. He was a tyrant about it, but that, he's the boss. Like they say in the mafia, you got the boss, you got. And the article on the Harrison Avenue Bridge. I appreciate the fact that it's got attention, but better sooner than later. We might have lost the weather. Hopefully, soon before any damage happens, that water soaks in. Universal solvent. Now, with all of this radicalism that's going on, please be cautious with the finances. Just be careful. We're probably okay for this year, but things aren't really going to get any better. And it's, the only thing you can do if you get too obligatory to various interests is to raise taxes, and that's starting to hurt. And on the roads, I hear that constantly. They should use that money to fix the roads. Well, what's the point when you get, you get a utility tearing them up? On Hickory Street, 800 block, massive disgusting patch on it. And then right before you hit Evans Realty on that same street, probably out in front of that old church, another big pothole. And then I turned on, off of Pittston Avenue there when I'm turning to Music Street, so I don't know if that's Pittston or not. There is one hell of a big hole. I'll say hell because I could see the flames down there. And it's been, this tax exemption, you can't tax a tax exempt, but what we need is compensation from the state. And I always felt that the taxpayers should be granting exclusive taxpayers, non-government. But the idea of exclusive is that the people that were coming in to the taxpayers when we had it were people that were profiting mightily by not having to pay taxes to replace all of the tax exempts. So we really need to go after the state and even possibly get a, get a court decision on it, if you can. On the streetscape, you know, I would hope that we don't change the streets too much. The lights are good and all, and no bike lanes on the streets. We really don't need that downtown. You know, I was down here last week. A friend called. He was having... that downtown. You know, I was down here last week. A friend called. He was having some car trouble, and a guy passed me up there by, by the college on the parking lane, just because I was going slow and looking around. But I certainly was going a reasonable speed, and we're pulling up to a red light. So we don't need any more craziness with driving in this town. Congratulations, lover boys. You went out and voted last Tuesday, and my missus was on the computer, and there are women denouncing, swearing off of men over birth control and all of these issues and lack of support. So I hope you have a love life when you're all done, and thank you, and have a good night, everybody.
Thank you. That's all for the sign-in sheet. Anyone else wish to address council?
Evening, counsel. Tom Coyne, Manuka. Back to business. I sent up the same spreadsheet that Joan evidently did, and we both crunched the numbers and came out with the same exact percentages on raises. So it looks like each one of us was doing double duty. What I find amazing is that when the funding failed for the Naught Park Pool Project, the administration did not even have the courtesy to inform council on this fact. And if they did inform certain members of council, those members of council certainly did not inform the public before the last meeting. Talk about a house divided. I see in the budget, the care continues for the unshelter, as we have in the 2024 budget, $10,000 unspent for the hunger initiative, and $10,000 for the homeless outreach initiative. Nothing spent. I see why people are upset when they look at the numbers, especially the unions, when the mayor's executive assistant and special assistants both get 8.1% increases. The big winner, as noted, was the confidentiality secretary, secretary at 23.14%. It's not from the HR department and employee files, so I can't target that as, for that wonderful confidentiality, but 23% raise, really? In the budget, we see the Beautiful Blocks Program allocated $10,000 and has zero spent as of 9:30. We want an increase of that budget from $40,000 to $100,000 when nothing was spent, an increase of 250%. Planning Commission has $10,000 and spent $38.46? Are we missing bills? Shade Tree, $40,000 unspent. Capital expenditures, $20,000. Nothing been spent. On the other side is the code enforcement supplies. They had $4,500 in the pot, and they spent $18,605 by the end of September. Is that due to the double recycling card and mailing and the printing of them going out, as it was supposedly by a friend of a code enforcement officer, who is the person who's the printer for that recycling calendar? Streetscapes in Wyoming, for Wyoming Avenue, has $2.2 million obligated but not expended. Move some to Naught Park. Streetscapes North Washington and Linden has 1.95 million. Adams has 1.98 million open. Revenue loss without an audit can be 10 million. Right now, we have 9.85 obligated but not spent. That leaves 150,000 that can be shifted to other programs. Revenue loss has Robinson Park expended $300,000, but still has a $200,000 balance. Electric vehicles has expended half, but has $108,109 left. I understand we're obligated for a five-year lease. Move some of it and replace it with part of the landfill $100,000 a year fund. We have extra trash and fire trucks supposedly to lend out, so we should be good, right? I understand that some of the programs I suggested above are not in the revenue loss category, but if we can free up some unallocated revenue loss space and move some to other categories, we may be able to add a little more to revenue loss space to fund Naught Park pools. Tech upgrades to city assets is in revenue loss. Could that $300,000 be shifted to infrastructure category from revenue loss and free up a slot for $300,000 more in revenue loss for the pool? I expect projects were set, and they did not want council to know, or the people to know, that Naught Park was in this state until the end of December, when the funds were locked in and could not be changed. Time is short. We need to move right now. As for the raises, I suggest reducing the large percentage of those managers to 2.5%. Take that extra money from the spreadsheet. It's $100,000. Put it to the Naught Park Pool. Are those working in the highest-paying positions of the city desperate need of 30 pieces of silver at the cost of the children and community? And I'm not asking people to forego everything, but as Huey Long said, we need to share the wealth. Thank you.
Good evening, counsel. Virgil Argenta. I would like to thank all law enforcement agencies and officers involved in their continuing efforts in keeping the residents and streets of Scranton safe following today's press conference. Now, the bid saga continues. As you're aware, the city of Scranton originally rejected the lowest bid for the Capous Avenue Spool Splash Pad Project. The city of Scranton claimed the reason was that the low contractor was not responsible. The city claims the low bidder on the Capous Avenue Splash Pad Project is not responsible due to the Novembreno Splash Pad Project and the fact that the low bidder on the Capous Avenue Project issued change orders on the Novembreno Splash Pad Project. Keep in mind, the city of Scranton accepted all but two of the change orders on the Novembreno Splash Pad Project, along with other change orders from the other prime contractors that were doing work on the Novembreno Splash Pad Project. Are you following me? Also presented to the city council was that a local taxpayer filed a preliminary injunction due to the city's rejection of the low bid for the Capous Avenue Splash Pad Project. A judge granted us the hearing. On November 8, 2024, challenging the city's award and its decision that the low bidder was not responsible, the city hired outside counsel to contest the preliminary injunction and to have this hired counsel represent the city at the November 8 hearing. After four and a half hours of testimony and evidence, the city of Scranton, through its outside counsel, advised the taxpayer in the court that rather than show any evidence in support of its rejection of the low bid and declaring that the lower bidder was not responsible, they decided after four and a half hours now to reject all bids for the Capous Avenue Splash Pad Project. So now the city is canceling the project for the splash pad on Capous Avenue, and it's going to rebid it again at a later date. This is factual. Counsel, you should be generally concerned. Why did the city go through this injunction hearing, pay an outside law firm when we have a solicitor and a team of lawyers in the city that are all looking to get raises, to appear in court for four and a half hours and then reject all bids? Counsel, you should be concerned. Why the city made claims and could not stand behind its declaration and accusations that the low bidder on the Capous Avenue Splash Pad Project was not responsible? Counsel, you need to ask, why is the city continuing to expend taxpayer dollars bidding and rebidding on this Capous Avenue Splash Pad Project, wasting and spending taxpayers' dollars that we do not have the waste? Counsel, you also need to inquire how much city funds were spent to date bidding and rebidding on the Capous Avenue Splash Pad Project. Counsel, you also need to inquire how much the city has paid the outside legal counsel to represent the city for this preliminary injunction, considering the 2025 budget has raises for the solicitor and that office. This issue isn't going away. Counsel, you're aware, if the city of Scranton has a controller, you may be able to confer with him on the issue of bidding. Remember one thing, counsel. You were, you were presented with an opportunity to sit down with this contractor before it went this far and cost the city any money. Doing work for the city shouldn't depend on if the mayor likes you or not. Counsel, you're presented with a lot, an awful lot of information on the budget tonight. Two members asked questions. You have one member who attends whenever he feels or he calls in. You have one member that's been leaving the seat for 20 minutes or more. Are you ready to make these educated budget votes? Start paying attention to the issues presented to you, counsel. Rumor has it that you guys are going to get raises, as long as you approve one for the mayor, Mr. Schmerl. Are you also aware that the homeless camps are back? Do you know anything about the rescues lately of the homeless people that have been in the underground culverts? There's probably six of them within the last months that are stuck in the underground culverts. Have a good night, counsel.
Good evening, counsel. Mike Mancini, Scranton. Tonight, I'm going to talk about common sense. How could an administration wait years to finally start work on so many projects, knowing that the costs have been less years ago? One that is near and dear to me is Naught Park. Those pools will be closed for seven years before they are reopened. That's if the mayor gets the $3 million in donations for her very costly mistake. It's like she's saying, I messed up. Give me money so I don't look bad, so I could be reelected. It's a horrible feeling, knowing that children and families cannot experience what it's like to swim and make a day of it at our crown jewel of a park. One of my very first memories of Naught Park was July 4, 1976. Peters administration put on a great night that I will never forget. Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Peters. The good people of Scranton would like to know when each of these projects will be completed. The mayor speaks about painting 200 crosswalks. That's 50 intersections. Scranton is almost 26 square miles. There are well over 4,000 intersections in the city of Scranton. Schoolchildren take buses throughout the city. They do not live within a two-block radius of a school. $500,000 for pavement inspectors from Luzerne County who do not know our roads, just like Elaine Cipriani, is not the answer. How much does it cost for an engineering firm from Luzerne County? Utility companies continue to cut our roads without sealing them properly, causing reoccurring expenses for the good people of Scranton. None of you even address the issue and have anybody contact the utilities to prevent reoccurring expenses. I would certainly hope that there is a change with the president of council next year. Cutting grass and hanging decorations, as your only qualifications, do not work for Scranton. Dr. Rothschild, sincerely hope that you would consider this as an option. A few former councilwomen in the past come to mind who did very well, and I think they could chatter some ceilings. I would also hope that Shaw McAndrew gets more than 100 signatures and runs for city council. We need a change for the better. When it comes to the mayor, she continues to crumble under pressure. There was an incident and an accident this past Saturday on Kozar Avenue. Truck Ford was responding to a fire alarm. There was a vehicle in the way that, that chose to pull off to the left as opposed to the right, causing a minor accident. Thankfully, nobody was injured. Police arrived and questioned the driver. She replied, I thought that I had to pull off to the left for the fire trucks. The driver was our mayor. Call Harvard and get your money back. They failed you. Safety in our community is critically important to our future. Today, we heard about an 11-month investigation by the Scranton Police, State Police, Attorney General's Office, Lackawanna County Detectives, District Attorney Mark Powell, First Assistant Brian Gallagher, and the good people from the Lackawanna County District Attorney's Office. And I were charged so far. Guns, vast amount of drugs, including thousands of pills, suspected to contain fentanyl in the pill press. My son passed away from a pill containing fentanyl. So on behalf of my son, my family, my friend, his friends, his brothers and sisters in the Marines, thank you for keeping our community and each one of you safe, and all of us safe as you possibly can. God bless our first responders. God bless the good people of Scranton. Good evening, counsel.
Anyone else?
Fifth order, five motions.
Mr. King, do you have any motions or comments?
Just a comment. I do want to thank Scranton Police Department in conjunction with the District Attorney's Office, the FBI, State Police, doing a tremendous job. 11 months of hard work gathering up those nine criminals who were really, truly injuring and putting lives at stake in our city. So kudos to all the great work that went into that. Once again, something was mentioned earlier about the PUC, Pennsylvania American Water Company, that we did nothing, we said nothing. Well, there was an office across the street. We all, every one of us spoke at a hearing. State reps, I met with Borough Council on Dunmore. We worked together. I thought it was a great effort. Many of you sitting here went and testified, and I felt like it was a really true community effort to try to fight Pennsylvania American Water Company. We weren't totally successful, but we cut it in half, so we achieved something. But to say that we did nothing, sat here, that's, it's not the truth. We did what we could, and I think it was a good effort by everyone, not just council, the mayor included, along with our state reps, our state senator, and Borough Council on Dunmore, and the citizens of the city of Scranton. Petitions were signed. People spoke. We fought it, and we got it reduced. We didn't get it to zero, which we all would have liked, but we got it reduced. So to say we did nothing, sorry, that's wrong. Something was done. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Mr. Schuster, do you have any motions or comments?
So yes, I do, I do have a few. Just a reminder, this Thursday, November 14, at 6:00 PM, there will be a meeting at the Trips Park Community Center to discuss stormwater, and it's the stormwater projects that are in North Scranton, West Scranton, Manuka, and Trips Park. So anybody in those affected areas, there will be a meeting Thursday at 6:00 at the Trips Park Community Center. Some of the questions I had tonight to get, to get answers for, I asked during the caucus. I asked about the leaf cleanup, if they were following the schedule. Looking at the schedule, the answer that we got tonight is they're somewhat following the schedule for leaf cleanup, according to that recycling calendar, but they're going to get high, high areas of leaf falling here and there when they can. So I would suggest that anyone that has neighborhoods that are high in leaves, please call DPW to let them know that your area is in need of a cleanup, and they could get out with the, with trucks and the back trucks to clean up those leaves, because I think that's how they're taking the high priority areas, is citizen calls. I got some, some answers from last week. So I did have some inquiries about Rubicon. We heard tonight in caucus. I asked if the contract, as it's ending in December, if we're going to continue that contract. So they did give us an update that... So they did give us an update that once the testing is complete, they're going to go live. I asked about a go-live date. They said they'll provide it to council in the future, but Rubicon is a software as a service, so that means that we're going to require to have the software for that system that we're going to run independently on our own after the routes have been optimized. Hopefully, we get the routes optimized by December and we get a rollout, and then we could utilize that data collection and information from that system to make our routes more efficient, to save some money. At this point in time, it's yet to be seen. At this point in time, it's yet to be seen. Frank, if we could just send over to administration what the annual fee is? I know we did ask it in person tonight, but if we could officially put that in, what is the annual fee for the software for Rubicon?
I'll ask that question, sir.
You'll see tonight in our agenda, there are some projects in Kaiser Valley that have been completed as part of the 2018 flooding, so they're going to go into the budget and they're reimbursable projects. So finally, some of those projects from 2018 were completed. I think that's all I have for tonight. Sorry, one last thing. It's been stated, thank you to the Lackawanna County DA's office, the state police, Scranton Police Department for the arrests that they've made, taking some dangerous items off of the streets. So thank you for that arrest and that investigation. That is all.
Thank you, Mr. Schuster. Dr. Rothschild, do you have any motions or comments?
Yes, I do. I have a few things, some things that are in response, so a couple of things that are on a number of topics here. But first off, I also wanted to thank our SPD and our partnerships with the county and other departments who were able to arrest the gang members and to take more drugs off of our streets. I appreciate the work that they do so much in keeping our community safe, and I appreciate them being here tonight, both Chief Carroll and Chief Judge for explaining all the work that their departments have done over the past year and what we have to look forward to in the budget. Speaking of the budget, with regards to questions on it, there's a lot that goes on behind the scenes and outside of these council meetings. I've spent many hours going through the budget and developing my own questions and many that have been asked outside of the meetings so that I don't necessarily need to take up the time during those caucuses because I know how valuable it is to hear from those department heads coming in and to be able to ask those questions in advance, so I already have those answers. So there's plenty that's being done on that, and I do appreciate, too, the questions that other council members have had, many of which are similar to what I would ask, especially with regards to the questions tonight on Rubicon and the route optimization. I also really want to see that occur. We've been waiting way too long on that, and I've been disappointed as well, so I just wanted to express that, and I want us to get our money's worth of that program, too. The other thing that I wanted to just touch on, too, that Councilman King had addressed on our involvement with the Pennsylvania American Water Company and the PUC meetings that took place last year. I mean, we all worked very hard to try to get those increases lessened, if not dissolved, and unfortunately, there still were increases, not as much as that there would have been if we hadn't been speaking up and hadn't gotten together with the community and organized with others and elected officials in our area to do that. So I feel like we have been very vocal as a council on that, and to say that we're doing nothing or have done nothing is absolutely untrue and as far from the truth as you can get. And there was a question about the Beautiful Blocks grant money or money from the city, if that had been spent, and I know that it has been, so that must be an error that needs to be corrected in the budget. And let's see here. I, there was something, too, about the Naog Pool Grant that they had been going forth for the second phase of the pool construction, and I know I was not aware that that grant had been denied prior to us being informed of that last week during the meeting, so I don't, I could just speak for myself on that, just wanted to make that clear. And there's a complaint that I've been trying to get addressed, and I know Mr. Waldenberg has sent this out multiple times, too, and I still don't know why it's not fixed, but it's just a streetlight that's out on the 700 block of Harrison Avenue, so if we can please ask again.
That'd be 739 Harrison. I'll follow up.
Why they can't fix a streetlight. That'd be great. Thank you. I think that's all that I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Rothschild. Mr. McAndrew, do you have any motions?
I didn't have anything, but I do now, so. Mr. Morgan, the way he addressed us and said we've done nothing about the water increase is just ridiculous. If he stayed for a meeting, you know, for the remainder of meetings, he'd hear the There was public hearings with the PUC, which is process. We follow the process. We all went and petitioned on behalf of the residents, the rate increase. We've had dialogue with Pennsylvania American Water. I mean, we did our best. Beyond that, I don't know what else we can do. We stood up for the residents, we fought for the residents. We can't wave a wand. I think he thinks we can, but we can't. And I just want to state that on behalf of myself and my colleagues here. We fought the fight. We didn't win this one, but I don't know what else he thinks we can do. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. McAndrew. As far as the grant for Naog Park that we did not receive, I believe next week we will be getting legislations down for another grant application that is already in process to put Naog Park back on again, and that is for the second stage, which is, I would say, a little over a year away, so I think we're still in good shape. That is all. Mr. Waldenberg?
Mr. Smurl, while we're on that, can we contact Elaine Cipriani to see what ARPA money is left over? We have a lot of budget transfers that we got. What money is left over and what is the reason we wouldn't be putting it towards the next phase of the Naog Pool? If we can get that definitive answer along with that question. Is there any remaining ARPA money that's not?
Or can we reprioritize it?
I will do that tomorrow.
I knew this was going to happen. No, I knew that this first phase was going to get done, and we weren't going to get that eight-lane pool. Well, guess what? This budget is going to somehow reflect that we are going to get that eight-lane pool.
5B for introduction and ordinance, amending the responsible contractor ordinance, chapter 113 of the city code.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5B be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
I'm sorry.
No, you got it.
The ayes have it, and so move.
5C for introduction and ordinance, levying the property tax millage for the year 2025.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5C be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5D for introduction and ordinance, maintaining the waste disposal and collection fee at $300.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5D be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5E for introduction and ordinance, levying local service tax, LST, at $156.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5E be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5F for introduction and ordinance, amending file to council number 98, 2023, and ordinance as amended, entitled, appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2024 to and including December 31st, 2024, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2024 to increase the intergovernment FEMA emergency permits revenue line item account, as noted, by an amount not to exceed $2,356,854.0, and to increase the Department of Public Works Administration Professional Services Expense Line Item Account, as noted, by an amount not to exceed Said increases acknowledge the increase in expenditures and the increase in reimbursable revenue that was not identified in the 2024 operating budget.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5F be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, Mr. Waldenberg, could we ask if there's a timeline for the FEMA PMA reimbursements coming back to the city? Have we accounted for all of the money that the city has expended in doing those projects? And what is the percentage of our reimbursement that we're getting for those projects that have been completed?
I'll ask those questions, sir.
Thank you.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5G for introduction and resolution, ratifying and approving the execution and submission of the grant application by the city of Scranton to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation's Multimodal Transportation Fund for up to $2 million to be used towards the Ast Street Bridge Project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5G be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5H for introduction and resolution, appointment of Sherri Frabel, Scranton, Pennsylvania, to the position of Executive Director of the Office of Economic and Community Development effective October 28th, 2024.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5H be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5I for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for the beautification of downtown.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5I be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5J for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract between the city of Scranton and the Scranton School District with Rainey and Rainey to perform Scranton Single Tax Office Independent Audit for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2022.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5J be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5K for introduction and resolution, amending file number 99 of 2024 as amended, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to perform stormwater improvements at various areas of interest within the city of Scranton, to revise the funding amount subject to the intra-agency agreement.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5K be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5L for introduction and resolution, amending file number 100 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds to perform disaster mitigation for the Lindy Creek tributary, to revise the funding amount subject to the intra-agency agreement.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5L be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5M for introduction and resolution, amending resolution number 134 of 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for splash pad equipment and enhancements to Capous Avenue Park Playground to revise the funding amount subject to the intra-agency agreement.
At this time, entertain a motion for item 5M be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5N for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for the purchase of a new ARC geographic information system and geo tabs to carry out the City Hall Esri System project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5N be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5O for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for the assistance, maintenance, and installation of features to parking facilities.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5O be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, this piece of legislation has $30,000 for electric charging stations? I'm going to be voting no on this. Maybe we could reallocate $30,000 towards the Naog Pool.
Mr. Schuster, I did inquire on that also, and the $30,000 is going to the stormwater project that they're already doing, and we are just, yeah, I know, they should have corrected. I found it today. So they told me it was going to be used on the stormwater project, but that's, you know.
So this is the one that's features to parking facilities? 5O. Assistance, maintenance, installation of features. The features are electric charging stations.
5O, right.
It's 5O.
Page four is of the document.
Yeah.
State's electric charging stations.
Yeah, and that's when I asked if what charging stations because of other reasons, but they said it was, I think they told me that today, so I will find out again tomorrow, make sure that's where it is. It was supposed to go to the $30,000 to be added to their stormwater project that they're doing so that we don't have to individually do that whole project.
Okay, if we could find that out.
Yes, I will. Anybody else on the question? All those in favor, I'm sorry.
Okay, I was just looking at it. All right. Okay, sorry.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it, and so move.
5P for introduction and resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a memorandum of understanding with the American Rescue Plan Act Director to obligate state and local fiscal recovery funds for the repair of the pool and bathhouse at Weston Field.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5P be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it, and so move.
5Q for introduction and resolution, waiving responsible contractor ordinance requirements for the procurement of certain site work and related work for a salt storage shed.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5Q be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question?
On the question, so when looking at the original ordinance with the responsible contractor ordinance that we passed recently, there's three reasons we could waive an ordinance or waive this. One is because it's an emergency situation, two, it's through a resolution, which this is what this is, and three, at the request of the BA, that none of the bids meet the standards of the ordinance. So at this point in time, they're asking us to use the second route as waiving it through resolution. I was happy to see that we did get some of the bids. Do they know which bid it's going to be granted to, or after we waive it, they're going to choose the bid?
Right, there is, I was told there was, well, it was, all the bids came in, one was $300,000, one was $200,000, and so the reason one of the companies did not get it was because of the new rules and stuff. So I did speak with somebody from unions today and some other people. and some other people. And we're going to be tomorrow on this to get the wording straight so that we're all on the same page because we just put this through. So I don't want to go make an exception already because it's new. So I'd like to naturally just introduce it and find out tomorrow what the wording really should be or how it should be in there, not just say, okay, we're going to make it an emergency job, because we could do that every day.
Yeah, yeah. That's an easy excuse.
So I don't want it to just be passed by that. I want to hear everybody's part of it. So we are meeting tomorrow on this.
All right. I mean, I would be willing to table if we wanted to keep it off, if we wanted to hold it where it's at until we get those answers. I mean...
Supposedly tomorrow, I'm getting it. The only reason I would like to introduce it is so that the salt shed can get up because we have salt coming and nowhere to put it.
Okay.
And unfortunately, it would be an emergency. And then they could make that decision without it. So...
Okay. So we'll move it forward. But yeah, there's questions definitely to be answered on this one.
Yes. Okay. All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5R for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the city of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account statewide grant for up to $408,510 to be used towards the Point Balance Advocacy Center project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5R be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
5S for introduction, a resolution, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and submit a grant application by the Office of Economic and Community Development of the city of Scranton on behalf of the University of Scranton to the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania, acting through the Commonwealth Financing Authority for a local share account statewide grant for up to $204,000 to be used towards the University of Scranton's nursing simulation laboratory expansion project.
At this time, entertain a motion that item 5S be introduced into its proper committee.
So moved.
Second.
On the question, I do have a problem with this. The city of Scranton continually helps the University of Scranton. Everything they ask for us, we ask of us. We do. Put grants in for them, whatever. I believe now it's time for the University of Scranton to step up and help the city of Scranton with your donation in lieu of taxes. We continually have increases in our fire and our police and our garbage and everything that the university uses. And your donation continually decreased. So I would really like to see that donation increase. And another reason is, at the end of the school year, the buildings are cleared out up there. And the city of Scranton taxpayers pick up tons and tons of garbage throughout the entire Hill section. And this has been going on for many, many, many years. So I would just like to see that increase.
So I'll also chime in on that. It's glad to hear you say that, Mr. Smurl. The University of Scranton benefits off the city of Scranton for countless things, whether it be the zoning ordinance or whether it be things such as this. So I would like to see an increase in that pilot payment to the city.
All those in favor of introduction signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
No.
The ayes have it and so move.
Sixth order, 6A, reading by title, filed counsel number 42, 2024, an ordinance appropriating funds for the expenses of the city government for the period commencing on the first day of January 2025 to and including December 31st, 2025, by the adoption of the general city operating budget for the year 2025.
You've heard reading by title of item 6A. What is your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I move that item 6A pass reading by title.
Second.
On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it and so move.
I make a motion to table item 6A.
Second.
There's a motion on the floor and a second to table item 6A. This ordinance is being tabled to allow for advertisement of public hearing to be held on Tuesday, November 26, 2024, at 5:45 PM. On the question, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it and so move.
Seventh order, 7A, for consideration by the Committee on Rules for Adoption, filed counsel number 41, 2024, amending filed counsel number 25 of 2024, ratifying and approving an intergovernmental agreement of cooperation and memorandum of understanding between the city of Scranton and the Borough of Music regarding coordination on zoning, planning, and code enforcement of 53 Glen Mara National Boulevard to ratify the updated memorandum of understanding from Music Borough.
As chairperson for the Committee on Rules, I recommend final passage of item 7A.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
I'm sorry. Mr. King?
No.
Mr. Schuster?
No.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
No.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. The motion has failed.
7B for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 135, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into an interlocal agreement between the city of Scranton and the county of Lackawanna, both within the Commonwealth of Pennsylvania.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, Public Safety?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7B.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7B legally and lawfully adopted.
7C for consideration by the Committee on Public Safety for Adoption, Resolution Number 136, 2024, accepting a donation in the amount of $1,800 to the Scranton Fire Department to be placed in special city services account, as noted.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety?
Excuse me. As chairperson for the Committee on Public Safety, I recommend final passage of item 7C.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7C legally and lawfully adopted.
7D for consideration by the Committee on Public Works for Adoption, Resolution Number 137, 2024, authorizing the mayor and other appropriate city officials to execute and enter into a contract with Fugro USA Land, Inc., to perform services for the city of Scranton's request for Lackawanna Regional Stormwater Impervious Area Assessment.
What is the recommendation of the chairperson for the Committee on Public Works?
As chairperson for the Committee on Public Works, I recommend final passage of item 7D.
Second.
On the question, roll call, please.
Mr. King?
Yes.
Mr. Schuster?
Yes.
Dr. Rothschild?
Yes.
Mr. McAndrew?
Yes.
Mr. Smurl?
Yes. I hereby declare item 7D legally and lawfully adopted.
Eighth order, no business at this time.
If there's no further business, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.